Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 28. I'm sorry. Today is Tuesday, June 28. And Special Board Meeting of the Salem Kaiser School District is called to order. This meeting is a work session and we welcome Vince Adams, Board Development Specialist from OSBA, who will be leading us through our work this evening. As time allows, following our session with Vince, we'll engage in a couple discussion topics. I'd like to take note that all board members are present for today's meeting. When I started this and good afternoon, welcome me bienvenidos to the Salem Kaiser School Board Meeting. At all times, whether we meet in person or virtual as we are tonight, we strive to be inclusive, respectful, and welcoming to our students, staff, educators, administrators, board members, and all community members. We welcome people of all genders, people of African descent, Black, African American, Asian descent, Arab descent, European descent. Those who identify as Hispanic Latinx, people indigenous to this land, and people of mixed and multiple descents. Languages spoken in our communities are welcome. Spanish, English, indigenous languages, sign language, Chukis, Somali, Russian, Chinese, Vietnamese, and many more. People with disabilities, visible or invisible. People of all religions, believers in all faiths or creeds. Gay, lesbian, bisexual, heterosexual, pansexual, transgender, queer, two-spirit, or others for whom none of the labels fit. Survivors. Your emotions: joy, bliss, grief, rage, indignation, contentment, disappointment. Your families, genetic and otherwise. Our veterans who proudly served and are currently serving our country. Our elders, those here in the room, in our lives, and those who have passed away. People impacted or displaced by the war in Ukraine and other violent conflicts. Yes, and finally, we'd like to welcome the ancestors who lived in this land where we live and work. Welcome the spirits of the Saniam, Kalapuya, Soletz, and Gran Ron, the natives who lived in this area before the Europeans came. Welcome y bienvenidos. Now I'd like to ask you all to join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, there's no agenda modifications. So I'd like to introduce Vince Adams and turn things over to him. Vince, take it away, please.
Well, Salem School Board, Chair Avila Superintendent Perry, it's a delight to be with you. If you were watching, you might have noticed I dropped out there for a minute. I am experiencing some technical difficulty on my end. And so, please bear with me if I stall or stop. I will do everything to get back and if it becomes too much of a trouble, we may have to reschedule. But I have, hopefully, that was the only bump in the flight tonight. So, thank you for having me again. I've been looking forward, as I was preparing for this session, I was reflecting on the board's work earlier this month. And I was just reminded of the hard work and the candor and the courage of board members as you work together to provide feedback to me on your operating agreements. And so, I just wanted to express my appreciation for that hard work and just looking forward to continuing working with you tonight. I know that you do have a discussion after the work with me tonight. So I want to just jump right in and get to work. So I'm going to share my screen really quickly and remind us of our norms. So, just like you did last time, speak your truth. I was just really impressed with the candor that that board member spoke with last time and just being truly authentic to yourselves. That is really the heart of board work. We have to be our authentic selves and do the best we can. Assuming positive intent always, that we're all coming to this work to help children. And so, assuming that as we come into any discussion and conducting our work with care and respect. And that has definitely been a hallmark of this board. You've, you know, at least in the past several sessions, you've strove to be respectful and kind with each other. And I really appreciate that hard work on your part. Okay. So, you know me, I always start with one of these squishy, you know, icebreaker activities. And so, let's go around the horn and talk about, you know, what is your favorite thing to do during summer? Now, this is actually a picture I took. And so, you can predict what I like to do in the summer. And that's spend time on the Willamette River. It's, it's my quiet place. And so, I always retreat to the river in summer. And so, who would like to go first? What's your favorite thing to do in summer and why? Why is that important to you? Yeah, Ashley.
I'll jump in this time. Mine is very similar to yours, Vince. I love to go camping and I love swimming, kayaking, stand-up paddle boarding in any sort of mountain lake.
I'm right there with you.
Happy place.
Yeah. Thanks, Ashley. Who's next? Yeah, Marty.
Yeah, my favorite thing, well, I do love camping, but I prefer to camp outside of Oregon. That's my happy place. It's not in Oregon.
Camping outside of Oregon, okay. Great. Where is your favorite place outside of Oregon to go camping?
My cabin in another state.
Oh, okay. Alrighty, who'd like to go next? I have a list. I will call on you. Yeah, Satya.
Well, I'm doing my favorite thing. I'm in Baker City as we speak. I love Eastern Oregon. So, you know, before I used to drive to Honey County and just hang out there. Like a salmon, you start where you started, right?
Right.
Started in Pendleton, I cannot go back to Eastern Oregon when I need to have real sanctuary.
Yeah, I love getting over to the east side. It's beautiful over there.
Thank you.
And it's quiet.
It's quiet. When you're driving 5,000 miles, there's nobody other than you.
It's, it's really wonderful. Okay, who's next?
I'll jump in.
Thank you, Karina.
I love everything that Ashley shared as well, love spending time outdoors. But one cute little unique thing about every summer is walking through our local parks and pick, just picking blackberries off the wild bushes with my son and just enjoying that evening, cool air in the summers. That's just kind of what I look forward to this time of year and those slow moments.
Warm blackberries in summer. It's a special thing, for sure.
I'll jump in Vince and I'll say the, yeah, just being outdoors with family, different barbecues, different events. Always have the support of family and being around them, the laughs and the memories that you get to develop, you know, whether that might be out camping or just at somebody else's house and barbecuing or barbecuing in the park. Just being out in nature and doing outside games. I love it.
Absolutely. Yeah, my family, my whole family loves getting on the river. Absolutely. Okay. Only a couple left here.
You know, I am not a super outdoorsy person, but my family and I usually go down to Mexico to visit family around this time. So, you know, these gathers, you know, cookouts and just spending time with family.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you, Maria. Do we have Danielle? I'm seeing her on my screen.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, where did you, oh, there you are, sorry.
I just like to be a family outside.
Outdoors with family. I think it's an Oregon thing. Maybe it's, maybe it's just, everybody likes to do that. All right. Thanks a lot for that, folks. It's important to, you know, get to know each other. Find out what you like doing. What matters to you. All right, so, hard time tonight. Of course, we may not get to all of this, but I definitely want to get, get the content for your board superintendent operating agreement. We've, we've tried to get to this in our last two meetings and we've just really put the bulk of our work into that board operating agreement. So we're gonna, we're gonna go over that board superintendent relationship and expectations there first. And then, I sent you a, the current draft of the operating agreement. And so, I'll want to quickly get some feedback from you and then some guidance from you on how you'd like to proceed. And, and then if we have time, we can work on that little worksheet that I gave you, talking about the role of the board. We may or may not have time for that. And then, but we will talk about next steps and where we're headed. Yeah, Marty?
Did I miss something? I mean, I saw the draft for the board operating agreement and I vaguely remember maybe something a long time ago for the board superintendent operating agreement, but it's gone the wayside in my email. And I don't know if I was supposed to get something more current. So I haven't seen it recently. I don't know what's in it anymore.
That's because it doesn't exist yet because we haven't, we haven't done the formative work to build it. And so, that's,
Not behind then.
You are not behind. You're right on time. No, you're doing great. Nope. So that's, that's why we're gonna, we're gonna start with that board superintendent content. So I can start drafting that document for you folks and you can get your eyes on it and start, you know, honing that in and getting it calibrated to your needs. Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Hearing none. I'm gonna hit the next button here. Okay, so, the, we're gonna dive right into this board superintendent work. Now, this is, it's gonna go just like we did it when we were developing the content for your board operating agreement. So I have a series of prompt questions. I'm gonna let you sit with those questions for a little while. So you're gonna need something to write with and something to write on. And then you're gonna sit, develop that content, and then we're gonna go, we're gonna go around and collect that content. You'll remember that it was kind of frenetic and I'm trying to keep up with what you were trying to say and capture all that information. That's kind of, that's the process that we're gonna go through again. Okay. So our first prompt is this one. It's about board leadership. What is the role of board leadership? What should board members expect? And what should the superintendent expect of board leadership? And when we're saying board leadership, we're talking about your executive folks. This is your chair and your vice chair. Okay, and I'm gonna set a timer, five minutes, and I'll go ahead and let that start now. You're welcome to turn off your cameras and just rest with this. And I'll see. Just under two minutes remaining. When you turn your cameras on and I see eyes up, I'll know you're ready. Okay, 30 seconds. Capture those final thoughts there. All right, time is up. So who would like to go first? So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so board leadership, I put day-to-day tasks. So you know, not some big thing, but you know, small things that maybe need a little bit of information or whatever for the superintendent. Communicate with the entire board. Facilitate the superintendent's review and run an organized meeting.
Okay.
Let me know when you're ready for the next one.
Or, run. An efficient meeting? What was the type?
I use organized. It may not be the right word, but it's something. And then the next part, expectations of the board. Well, I didn't write down, what is that? What should board members expect? They should expect to be heard. They should expect to be treated with respect and not interrupted. And for the supervisor, the superintendent, I just put heads up on questions when possible.
Can I add no surprises to that, Marty? Is that fair? Thank you.
As long as the word, if possible, because it's not always possible.
Indeed, that is true. All right. Thank you, Marty. Maria, your hands up.
I put the role of board leadership. Developing, guiding vision with collaboration of all board members for directing like the superintendent and the district. And then similar to Marty, like maintaining communication with the rest of the board. And making sure that the rest of the board is like apprised of like any pertinent updates or information. Being the public face essentially of the board.
Okay.
And then board members should expect open communication and understanding.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
And then, the last one is the superintendent should expect one vision and direction. Kind of leaning back to the, you know, having some sort of guiding vision.
Can I add one board voice to that?
Yes, that's pretty much what I was referring. I'm assuming Vince is frozen.
I think you're correct. See if we can't get him back online here.
The choice of online meetings.
We could talk about our return to in-person meetings while he's coming back on.
Yeah, if you like to provide everybody with an update, Chrissy, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're set to go to Miller Elementary. And it's gonna, we're gonna be able to keep the board meeting set up in there for the entire time. We did an initial audio check today. We're doing another one tomorrow. And then, we need some setup with Interactio because they have a system that they, we've got to have people download an app and be sure we have headsets and all that. There's a good chance that maybe next week sometime, we may reach out for you and want you to do a quick stop-in to see the location and kind of understand the technology and all that. But we should be ready to go for the July board meeting. Welcome back, Vince. I have things to say while you're gone.
I apologize. Yeah, I've switched on. I am now running on my cellphone. So, we'll see how this goes. Yeah, not, not happy. Okay, and it's funny, I made it through the whole pandemic without having this happen. Here I am on the backend now having this. Okay, so sharing screen again. Let me reconfigure that. I need to close that. Bear with me, folks, while I get configured again. So we can see everybody. Perfect. Okay. So we had just heard from Maria. Who would like to go next? Or is that all the input that we have on expectations of the role of board leadership? And expectations, yeah, Satya.
Yeah, so, board leadership, you know, it's very easy to say, but in the ground reality is going to be difficult. So one has to be able to be flexible, adaptable, essentially a servant leader, to be honest. And we need to remember that as a board, we report to the community. So, and we report, we represent all our communities, including those who have different views, disagree with us, or think opposite of what I think. So one should be able to literally go sit and listen, even to the ones who probably spend more time to the ones who have a different view than the same view. So, ability to hold such courageous conversation. Make sure that we listen and build trusting relationship with different groups, different communities, different parents, is going to be an important part of board leadership. And board leadership should, I agree with Maria, we said develop a vision. Vision for what? Vision to make sure that every child, nobody is left forsaken and left behind. And that to me is a gist of equity. It's like, you know, everybody gets an opportunity to have a thriving life trajectory. So with that in mind, one should be able to ask for transparency in the system. Make sure the data and other information is available to all the board directors because board leadership's job is to bring the board along, including the board members with whom one may have a different views altogether. So, assume the positive intent that everybody, all seven of us are here because of a reason why we are here. And we all have something to contribute. Make sure that you utilize their experience, lived experiences, diversity, and probably any other experiences that they have kind of harness all that and kind of make sure the board keeps that perspective. So that's the responsibility of the leadership, is to make sure that the data, the policymaking, and the narrative all reflect the vision that we have to focus on all our children and not to leave any section of our community be. Then, the next important thing, if that is the vision, then, then he or she or all of them have to kind of make sure the seven of us are brought online as much as possible. So to work on alignment, it rests entirely on the board leadership. To not only articulate the vision, but also to find a way to reach and work across those seven board members. Because seven of us essentially are nothing but entire community. So when you bring different board members along, we are bringing different community. Each one of us represents 200, 300,000 people in this community. So we are respected. Each board member is essentially, we are the entire at-large community. So that's number one. And by demonstrating the role, by the way we conduct ourselves, we will gain respect and we will gain the respect of fellow board members and our community as well. So that is going to be an important part of bringing our community together, making sure that every board members feels included. They are included in committee work. They are included in contributing. Because if you feel that, a sense of belonging, then our children also will feel a sense of belonging. Our families also will feel a sense of belonging. So we have to lead by being a positive role model and the way we articulate our vision. Sometimes, the board leaders, Sometimes the board leadership will have difficult occasions where there may be a disagreement with the district because the district, of course, has the operational burden of everything. And suddenly moving such a big ship to a different direction can be hard. So then there are so many other factors will be there outside groups, advocacy group and other interest groups, etc. So both all board director, board leadership's job is to pivot immediately and become a board member. You can't be an activist board member because the board leadership is the last person. He has to bring the rest of the board along and become a pivot and become the board leader to help with articulating the vision. And making sure the data, information, etc. is available. And if a board director is having a different idea or not completely convinced or not able to understand, it becomes the board leadership's responsibility to spend more time with the board member to help them understand why they are proposing this approach to reach that vision. They may not have to agree, but at least that effort has to be there. And then each board directors should have the freedom to vote the way they want to vote, but give them the opportunity to explain why they disagree in that approach. The board leadership has to be able to tolerate that. That a given board director may have a different way of approaching and voting. That doesn't mean personally anything is against each other. That only demonstrates our commitment towards diversity, equity and inclusion. Inclusion means inclusion of different ideas as well, not just. So these are the important responsibility of leadership. Now, what do each board directors expect from the board leadership? I expect transparency. I expect that timely answering of any communication so that it gives us a chance to flush out our ideas or differences. It also gives a chat board leadership. I expected the board leadership should give me the ability to work to the top of my ability within the policy or what is allowed by me. By talking to different constituents and community members, etc. I may be, I should be allowed to have different ideas of approaching the problem. So that freedom must be there. Now, what superintendent should expect, superintendent should really expect that the board leadership will bring the seven board directors along because the seven of us are supposed to be the supervisor of the superintendent. So the superintendent hopefully should expect a clear articulation of vision. A clear measurable goal and interim goals. And then leave by executive limitation, ask the superintendent to do the operational part of it. As a board, we should never get involved or interfere with the operational part. And the board leadership, the superintendent should explain to the board leadership and who in turn will explain to the rest of the board. How the particular way in which they go about achieving that using district policies will meet that goal. And be transparent in sharing the data, the process they followed in policy. And another important thing is we should never, superintendent should work with the board leadership and the rest of the board and develop the shared narrative. Sometimes the narratives can be harmful to the community developing a trust in the board leadership. But by that I mean is we should never say anything that will discredit the board leadership. We can discuss differences privately, but never, never in the public because it takes a lot of time to repair that harm. And by that, what happens is people are, it becomes very difficult to work in that kind of setting where people become scared of the board leadership or suspicious of the board leadership without the community understanding on what basis that kind of statements were made. So I really felt I mean, the times are difficult, so we need to be very careful and how the superintendent communicates and describes the board leadership to the rest of the community at large or to the staff or to the students, etc. Because everybody means, well, that's why we are in this position in the voluntary position. We are all parents. We all want safety of our children, education of our children. Nobody wants anything different. So most kind of things should be very careful. That's, those are my observations I can send.
So Satya, I wanna, I've been distilling what you've been saying. You want, so there was a lot there. So the first item was servant leadership that is able to have courageous conversations. Transparency administrative in administration of the board's activities. Leadership works to get the best out of the work of the whole board. So trying to be inclusive of all members of the board. Leadership are stewards of the board's vision and goals. Heard that from a few board members now. Leadership fosters a sense of belonging. I really, really appreciate that comment. Superintendent should expect leadership will represent the interests of the whole board. And then the superintendent should collaborate with the chair and vice chair to develop unified leadership and really working collaboratively with the with the whole board, but that point of articulation will be with the board leadership. Did that, does that kind of capture everything? I, I, I wanna, I'm trying to be parsimonous because Danielle has been very patient here.
No, there's one more thing. Never, you know, the communication piece is very important. When communicating with community at large, we should not leave any room for potential for distrust of sections of community towards the board leadership. Really, really, really important. Because the board leadership carries a lot of burden on their shoulder. Knowingly or unknowingly, sometimes we make assumptions about board leadership. And we do not want something like that to lead to insinuation that board leadership doesn't lack or whatever it is. So because it takes a lot of time to repair that harm. That's what I want to say.
So Satya, I captured that as leadership should actively work to build trust with all parts of the community.
No, the superintendent and the board leadership should demonstrate that they are part of the same team. And not making statements that people can misunderstand, put superintendent board leadership at loggerhead. That's what I meant. I don't know if that you understood that.
Okay, so board leaders and the superintendent should be aligned in leadership. And that's clunky, but it kind of captures.
Board leadership should be available for superintendent, support superintendent. It wants to keep the delegation, then they should back the superintendent by being fully available at any time, every time. Meetings, no meetings, whatever it is. It takes a lot of time, but it, you have to be there. Never say, I don't have time. Because it's a lot of operational responsibility on the shoulder of our superintendent. And board leadership should lead by action, lead by from the front, head towards the problem.
Thank you, Satya. Okay, Danielle, you've been very patient. Thank you.
Thank you. So back to the point where you typed in leadership are stewards of the board's vision and goals. That's not actually what I heard him say. So I'm gonna translate what I think he said and or add by two cents. So I think it's important that board leadership has a clear understanding of each board member's state of mind. We, we seem to enter into controversial topics without having a good approach to be able to collaborate, compromise and create policy that works for the full board and in turn our full community. And so I think it's board leadership's responsibility to communicate individually with each board member on particular topics that might be forthcoming. And before we, you know, leadership decides that they end up on an agenda, maybe determine if a pivot is required to do some background work first before bringing certain topics into the boardroom. So in short, it's really about one-on-one communication, discussion and collaboration between board leadership and individual members. And then I think it's important for board members to be open to those discussions. I struggle, I was just reading, just for context, I was reading these operating agreements again that you put forward for the board. And there was something in there, of course, I lost it because I closed the screen. That talked about collaborative decision-making. And we don't really offer an opportunity for that collaboration to really occur. There's, you know, lots of meetings and hot topics and the administration really kind of navigates how, how the, what the board's work will be. And maybe that will change in the future, but but right now we only have board meetings to discuss topics amongst each other or put our, you know, before we go to a vote. And so Vince, I know this isn't really helpful for you as far as just like dialogue, but somehow I would like the board leadership to be more responsible and accountable. In discussion with individual board members and making thoughtful decisions on how the board can collaboratively be successful in its policy outcomes.
Thank you for that, Danielle. So I think I captured that. I think it starts, it starts here. Okay, board leadership should work to understand the views of all members. Is one of the things that's when you first started, board leadership will collaborate with the whole board to develop the legislative agenda of the board. So that's that, you know, we're creating this agenda, but we need to work, work with everybody to, you know, figure out what we're going to do across this whole year. And then, and then really just going down to the granular piece that you were, you were talking about is board leadership will meet one-on-one with members on a regular basis. Or periodically.
And I just, I don't want the component of the idea that if a topic is, needs to come to the boardroom, if it's going to be controversial in the boardroom, then maybe we need to do some work out of the boardroom decision space to see if we can get to a collaborative outcome.
So I captured that as board leadership will plan preparatory work when bringing controversial topics to the whole board. Okay, great. Other input, anything, are we missing anything that isn't on the board? Because we've got a lot here.
Hey Vince, I'll just add something that I think be helpful as well. I think there's a lot there for board leadership, but what I think what board members can expect to, to also make to engage and do some outreach to board leadership as well. As Marty said it very well, board leadership has a lot of day-to-day administration. Board leadership to be responsible for a board activity at the end of the day as well. And for expectations for superintendent. I would add that there is a working, a working relationship with a board leadership and board members. I would add effective relationship.
Okay, great. So I captured that as members will engage board leadership to share their views and expectations. So kind of taking the conversation that we've been having up to this point and kind of turning it on its head and saying, you know, it's okay for members to engage leadership as well. And then the other one is board leadership, the superintendent and the board as a whole will have an effective relationship. Okay, anything else before I move to Marty? Oswaldo, anything else? Okay, Marty.
Thank you. I just wanted to expand on something. When something controversial does come up, when I as a board member don't know about it until I get the agenda, it doesn't really give board members or the community time to really digest it and consider it. And I think if something was maybe going to come on the agenda that was controversial or might be a real hot topic that a heads up, like Danielle was talking about, you know, impossible discussion to, one, is this really the right time for that? And is this what we want to be focusing on right now? Or are there more important things like education and math and etc., things like that? Thank you.
So Marty, I captured that as leadership will give sufficient time for board members to process controversial topics before adding an agenda item. And this kind of goes along with what I think it was Maria, a lot when we met earlier this month, was talking about creating space for the whole board to process things outside of the context of a business meeting.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So the kind of those two things go together. Okay, Karina.
Two comments on maybe, and I'm not trying to wordsmith or like just pick up language. I had listen, like board leadership role to listen to district and other board members. And I know we've kind of put out the understand. But maybe as an alternative would be to listen. I don't know that we can always understand each other and we all have different lived experiences. And so all of that may be the goal. I think we have to start by listening at least. And then I've heard the word controversial come up and it's, I guess I'm not quite sure what that means, like controversial for who? And I don't want to like us to spend time necessarily on that, but what are we really saying? Like what is at the root of when we hear controversial? Like is it topics that maybe not, don't have consensus? And I think one thing that we know is there won't always be consensus on the board. So therefore there, there's still a need to bring topics that might not have full board support, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable necessarily with the word controversial because I think it already, it already sets some sort of connotation to topics that we might be bringing forward. And make what I'm hearing is a little bit more about kind of that process of what is our process to bring things forward on the agenda? Or how are we planning out future meetings?
Bear with me, folks. I really appreciate that, Karina. You know, controversial, yeah, that's, you know, controversial for whom? That's a really good point. It's really about conflict. And the reality is, is that in the board work is, has conflict built into it. It's part and parcel of what we do. How we work with that conflict, how we leverage that contract, how do we cultivate productive conflict to get positive outcomes is really at the heart of what we're talking about here. So the reality is the board is going to have to navigate things that most people would consider are controversial. And that's going to raise conflict. This board needs to be effective in managing and utilizing that conflict to get positive outcomes for kids. And so really is what that's getting at. So Satya, your hand is up, but I haven't heard from Ashley, so I'm gonna pick her first and then I'll come back to you. So Ashley, what have you got for me?
Um, so I think most of it's been covered. One thing that I had jotted down was that board leadership often is placed in the position to make tough decisions. I don't know if we've covered that. And then I found myself in what the board could expect of board leadership. A lot of the adjectives are already been said, but I really focused around consistency and transparency, clear communication. And then what the superintendent can expect similarly transparency, upfront communication. And clear direction on items that are appropriate for the board to provide that clear direction on. And so just, you know, as an example, I would say committing to having like multiple readings or placing agenda, I, you know, I think it would not be transparent to place an agenda item and vote on it like that meeting with no conversation with anyone. Item and vote on it like that meeting with no conversation with anyone. But I do think it's appropriate for board leadership to place an agenda item for discussion of the full board. Because there's still a lot of runway to have, have engagement from the public engagement from staff and other board members. And in alignment with public meeting law.
Oh no, I'm going offline. Oh no, I'm back. Okay.
And I don't know if I'm, yeah, if that's succinct enough, but just. Committing at the outset to a process for important or controversial or whatever we want to describe topics. And sticking to it, not springing a new process like the next month and the next month. Which is hard, but I think that helps to foster that clear expectation that. This is what, whether you agree or not with the policy, the expectation on the process is the same.
Okay, Ashley, I think I dropped out there. I'm sorry. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Hopefully you haven't heard me groaning as you guys freeze on the screen. So Ashley, I captured your comments as process will provide sufficient inconsistent space for members, staff and the community. Time to process the work of the board.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. Thanks Vince.
All right, Satya, very quickly because my internet is dodgy and, and we're already almost an hour in.
So Vincent, the board leadership and superintendent have two important roles for at least in the next three years. Our community is divided, board is divided, lots of groups are sitting in extreme and they need to bring everybody together for the sake of our children. I don't know how it will be, but that's going to be the biggest challenge for our board. Same thing with developing trust with all the community towards the board and the. District is going to be another thing. People are scared, people are divided, people are extreme, polarized, end of the spectrum, whichever way, right, left, north, south, whatever you want to call it. Board leadership and superintendent have to use their social capital. And bring them together, no more triangulation. So that's my, I yield rest of the time to you.
So point well taken. Yeah, one of the, one of the five roles of the board is building public will to succeed. So I captured your thought as board leadership will facilitate the board building public will to succeed.
Just want to be, please, just to put it as concrete, like we had to bring our community together, bring our district together, bring our boat together. For the sake of our children. We have to learn to trust each other and we have a lot of work ahead. Until then, all the other things cannot succeed until we build trust in our community. Our community is very polarized Vincent.
All right, I need to move on. So this was board leadership. Next one is the role of the superintendent. And this one element was from the board operating agreement. It just seems to fit here a little bit better. But so the prompt for you on this one here, I'll move this out of the way and zoom in so you can see this. So the prompts are, what is the role of the superintendent? What should board members expect and what should board leadership expect? And so we've been talking about this a little bit, but let's be a little more specific in aiming this at the role of the superintendent. And so we're going to take another five minutes here. And your time starts now. You can go ahead and shut off your, your screens if you'd like and, and sit with this, these questions. All right, we have about a minute left.
You praying to the internet gods.
I am, I am, in mural, I can, I can see it go out. Can you see that? Where it's, it gives me the, trying to reconnect, your internet is unstable. Yeah.
I think we see your screen. You go frozen for a bit.
Yeah. All right, five seconds. All right, time's up. All right, let me zoom out here. What is the role of the superintendent? What should board members expect? What should board leadership expect? Yeah, Marty.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, before you go, before you go Marty, I just, I want to get through the, these prompts. So if we can keep it to three points and let's shoot for brevity and really try to be compact with our language. So sorry to interrupt. Thank you so much.
I think they're short and sweet. And this is based upon my history over since 2015. So a super superintendent, what is the role of superintendent? To listen and follow the will of the board, to run day-to-day operations. To listen to and respond to the community, to respect the board members in public and to her or his employees. The next one, what should board members expect? Communication of what is happening in the district.
Okay, I, I got superintendent listens and follows the will of the board and that, and then I dropped out.
I'm sorry. Okay, yes. Run, run day-to-day operations. Listen to and respond to the community. And to respect the board members in public and to his or, his or her employees. The second item, what should board members expect?
I think you froze Marty.
I'm back. I'm in and out, yeah.
See the print is too small.
Community and staff there. So respect board members in communication with community and staff.
Respect board members in public and with employees, yes.
Yep.
The, the second bullet, communication of what's happening in the district. And the final bullet, close working relationship with the superintendent. And just paying attention to what's the role of the chair versus the superintendent.
Okay, thank you Marty.
And Vince, is there a clarification on, on these questions here and then the previous one? Is this more of a, a general, what our understanding should be, or is this more tied to, in reference to our board and our superintendent?
Oh goodness, I mean, the expectations of the superintendent are, are in policy. But yeah, you can tailor, tailor these to your particular situation. But we can't have any expectation that would violate policy or the superintendent's contract.
Okay, thank you.
Who would like to go next? Yeah, Maria, thank you.
Try and make it quick and give you time to catch up if needed. So, uh, role of superintendent, ensuring. High education standards for the district.
I'm not going to worry about spelling right now.
Establishing a competent team to effectively run the district or support in running the district. Ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for students. Board members should expect transparency. And. Same goes for board leadership and also the ability. To like communicate with the direct staffer or the correct staffer. I'm not really sure how to put that in kind of like an eloquent way.
With members with questions. Will be connected with staff. Can help, something like that.
Sounds, thank you.
Something, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's more elegant language there around that, but that's, I can find that. Thank you Maria. Yeah, Satya.
It's, it's so, I mean, there's some of the nice things have been said, you know. You know, and we have a new board member come in. It would be nice if superintendent does not assume anything except to understand how best that. The board member can contribute or articulate their experience because we all come from different culture, different background. So don't assume motivation or intent or mis, which could lead to potential for misunderstanding or miscommunication. So because I assume good intent, they are the operational leader. So the most important thing is they have to set the culture of the school and the school climate. Because all the other staff and educators should feel a sense of empowerment, inclusion, respect. And they should feel safe to share and contribute good ideas. Because that kind of empowered culture means our children are going to have the best possible way to develop critical thinking. And feeling the same way. The way we treat our staff is the way the staff will treat our children. The number one. If superintendent should really include different sections of community, family, et cetera, including those who may harbor different ideas. What does that mean? That superintendent should intentionally go looking for different community members to sit in different communities. Where they feel that they are participating, just like division 22 requirement. So we have to look for community members who intentionally have different perspectives, not the same perspective. That way we can mitigate our implicit bias, to only strengthen our, you know, confirmation biases. So that's another important role. Knows, you know, there had to be transparency with somebody mentioned, but I really want to emphasize on the need for. Keeping the board informed. Some of it could be confidential, sensitive material, but keep the board informed. Because if there's a fallout, the board has to be aware and can take the necessary steps to protect the board and the district and the children, et cetera. So keep the board informed of transparent, timely data. Let the board also participate in different community committees, so participate in policymaking. And also work with the board and board leadership to develop the shared narrative. When they have a massive communication department, they have access to media, et cetera. Let the board also sit and together project one voice. That would be very helpful for our community because, so that way, because board don't have anybody. We are like, we don't have any technical assistance other than having to rely on our own. So the board and the district can work together. What does the board leadership should, should expect from the superintendent? Transparency, real-time data. With the hope that in future, there is a public facing data because the data truly belongs to the community. There should be no surprises with operational policy. Are they aligned with the board vision and board direction? Are the district goals aligned with the board goals and with the result policy? So that we are able to hold an open. Trans, honest, back and forth, healthy discussion which will help district do well. Teachers will feel empowered, staff will feel engaged and empowered. The way we conduct ourselves, the board conducts themselves, the way superintendent and the board interact. Is how the teachers will feel a sense of belonging. They are able to contribute and the students and the family members will be able to model after that. So those are some simple things. In addition to follow the policy, don't violate anything and, you know, all those things others have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Satya. I've not kept track of who's taught, who has spoke, so I'm going to have to trust you. Who's next? Thank you, Ashley.
Um, again, most everything's been said. I would just add, um, the role of the superintendent is to focus on continuous improvement, I think, in all operations and processes and, um, I guess, um, emphasize something that Dr. Shonda Gary said around, um, I guess I would say it like no surprises. So I think it's, it's hard in a district of our size with as many things occur every day and week, but, um, I really like to know about something before I read about it in the paper about the school district. I think that's the former Senate staffer in me.
Yeah, no surprises, with rare exceptions. There are going to be times when superintendent is going to bring something to the board at the last minute and it's going to happen. So sometimes, you know, but yeah, with those emergent topics and, and I captured that, um, uh, from Satya's comments. Keep the board informed of emergent topics and issues. So that's along the same lines as that. Thank you, Ashley. Um, thank you, Osvaldo.
Yeah, the role of superintendent, um, I would say, you know, provide the, the leadership and guidance and support to achieve KPIs and outcomes for student success. Along with, uh, district personnel. I'd say also, you know, working to, to improve policies from hiring, uh, to teaching, uh, inclusive, diverse curriculums, practices, um, creating a diverse staff.
I think I caught that quite authentically. Improve policies around inclusive, and inclusive and diverse, diverse students and staff. That's very clumsy, but I think I captured.
And there are policies, um, around inclusive curriculums or like policies and curriculum that are inclusive. I think we lost you.
Let me clean this up.
Looking good.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
And I think I just, I would, I would add like, what should we expect, um, apart from everything that's already been said? It's just being accessible. Being accessible and with clear communication. And willingness. One is, willingness to, um, you know, bounce ideas, uh, participate, you know, engage in conversation. I think that, that goes down to listening. I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Osvaldo. Who haven't I heard from?
I'm going to jump in real quick because my dog is barking here. Um, I love to see collaboration between superintendent and board members, but also, um, other district leadership and administrators. So just to see collaboration, um, I was kind of glancing at the words that we have and what we think it might be alluded to in some other areas and I think the others that I had are already captured.
Okay. I think we've hit everybody, yes? I'm hearing no objection.
Well, Vince, I just.
Oh, no, I, I. Yeah, go, go.
So I'm, well, I don't know exactly how to frame it, but I'd really like to see the superintendent collaborate with the board on, on hard topics. And my experience has been it's more of a report to the board on things, how, what's happening. And less bring the board in to discussions on those hard topics to work towards policy setting or outcomes.
I think you say it just like how you said it there, Danielle. That's pretty direct. I mean, the superintendent board should collaborate on hard topics. Amen. Yes, I agree. Okay. I'm sorry. Now have I, have I got everybody? I have a speaking chart that I didn't use. I'm sorry. I promise on the next one. Okay, next one is on communication. We're making really good time. Next one, so we've heard a lot about transparency. But what does that mean in tangible terms? So how will the board communicate? How are you going to communicate with each other? And how are you going to communicate with superintendent, with staff and with the community? And I want you to think in as much detail as possible. Try not to use the word transparency. What do you mean by transparency? What do you mean by clear? Uh, what do you mean by timely, uh, communication? Be specific as possible. You don't have to come up with a lot here, but this is where, this, this is really actionable stuff. And stuff that you can, you can put to work. So, um, so try to be, try to be direct here. Um, five minutes, I'm going to go ahead and start the timer. Yeah, we have plenty of time. Okay, here we go. And if you turn on your camera and have your eyes up, then I'll know you're ready and we can enter, we can pull down early if you want. We're right at two minutes. We're down to one minute. All right, that is time. Now I've made a horrible error. So hold on, Osvaldo, because I have to go back. So I, I'd like to hear from the superintendent on this particular one. I want to go back to what the prompt that we had before. And so Superintendent Perry, what do you think is the role of the superintendent in the context of the board superintendent operating agreement? And then what do you think board members should expect from you and what should board leadership expect from you?
Yeah, I think I, um, I'm in agreement with the bulk of what's said here. That, um, goal-setting, vision-setting, day-to-day operations. And really working towards that, um, no surprises, collaborating on tough topics. So I, I don't think they, I don't think there's anything missed. I have some comments related to the current board policies we have, but I don't know if they fit right here because, I've just been thinking a lot about the policies are so clear on what's expected of the superintendent and delegated authority. And whenever it feels like we've gotten into some disagreement, it's related to operating under believing I had authority that maybe board wasn't sure I should have. And, and how that, um, can, how the policies can work to create alignment is what I'd like to really see is that we just really dig into those policies for alignment on what is my delegated authority? And what is, um, then what does the board want to do? So I don't, but I don't know if that quite fits there.
I think we lost.
And we lost him. He's back. It was really good.
I apologize and I missed all of that.
You're muted, Christie. It, it wasn't an Oscar-winning, um, speech there.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that, um, the notes that the board already put in there captured. My, um, and I don't know if it fits here, but clarity around the policy and the delegated authority, I think, is essential. And is really important to revisit from time to time. What is your delegated authority? What should be the role of the board? Um, because in the executive limitations in our board policies, there's tons of delegated authority. So where is there places we need to take that, you know, a board wants to take that back, which then creates alignment. Um, so the superintendent knows exactly what is the expectation.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Osvaldo. And Christie, I'm going to come back to you again, so I'm, I'll come back around here. Osvaldo.
Is it, yeah, can you, is it possible to bring up the, the prompts?
Oh, which one? For superintendent or for communication?
Communication.
Okay. So how do we communicate with each other? How do we communicate with the superintendent, with staff, with the community? And how should the superintendent communicate with us as well?
So you're no longer able to share the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's okay. There we go. Um, so, yeah, thinking, thinking about this, um, you know, respectfully, uh, communicate with each other respectfully in disagreements. Maintaining a demeanor that's still calm rationale. So we're able to, uh, speak to each other. You know, um, I would say another one would be understand, respecting the roles um, and the decisions of, of, um, board leadership or even chair, the chair at times, um, operating under Robert's rules and communicating would be, um, another one. And I think that goes for within each other, with the superintendent. And as well as, you know, respecting the roles as well would also fall under the, with the superintendent. And I think with staff, it really is, um, not undermining, not, not chastising them um, and calling them out in board meetings. Belittling their hard work and efforts when they're not our employees. And, um, seeking to ask questions and hear from our staff for better understanding on how the board can support. But not directly with them. Um, you know. I think with the community, um, being accessible. You know, obviously re, reading, make sure you read every, every email, every comment. And incorporate, uh, incorporate comments into decision-making processes.
I think I almost got you verbatim on that.
Almost, thank you.
Thank you, Osvaldo. Okay, Maria, your hand is up.
For me, um, I don't necessarily think that they need to be broken down into individual chunks. Because I definitely think that people should, I mean, like all of us, board members, uh, superintendent, staff, community, when we're interacting with each other. Really, we really have like a responsibility of ensuring that we're staying curious and open to the conversation that's being had. I know that you know, I'm going to go back on my last point, specifically when it comes to, um, our board members. I know that a lot of our topics can be really difficult. And we are tasked on making sure that our community voices are heard. And so we're coming at it to have an open and frank discussion with each other about the topics at hand. About the topics at hand. They're not personal attacks. And they shouldn't be personal attacks, and we shouldn't be practicing like passive-aggressive comments where. We're hiding our like true intentions. We should just be able to comfortably have communication and open dialogue. Especially when it comes to our community member outreach. Board members shouldn't be responding in dismissive. Or like nearly disparaging ways, because. These are real people with real lived experiences. It's so easy to just shoot back an email. And. Be. Not the greatest person that you want to be. Just to be clear.
So, Maria, I captured that in two. First, members should remain open and curious. About the conversation before the board, even when it's hard. And then, the others seek to not be dismissive of lived experience. Were the two ways that I distilled that down. Does that fit with what you meant?
Yeah, seek to not be dismissive of lived experiences when we're hearing from the community members. And. I guess, I mean, to me, it really boils down to like, how do you want to show up? I mean. When we're talking about things. As representatives of the community, like. We can, we are definitely passionate about it because that's why we're here, right? But it's not. A time to just personally attack each other. Right?
So, I just phrased that pretty directly there. Members will not engage in personal attacks. And we shouldn't. Thank you, Maria. Marty?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things to add. One is two-way communication, so. Sometimes I might email somebody and then I never get a response. And I don't know if they got it. What they thought of it, if they're ignoring it, or what. So, I made a request for an agenda item to be added, which hasn't been added yet, but. The chair did email me back that he got it, and I appreciated that he let me know that he got it. It's, it's in his work queue, or however he's managing that. So. It's very important when board members send something that might. Require a response, like a question or an action, that they get some sort of response. From each other or, and/or from the district. And then. So, I'm not a parent of children in the district right now, so I don't really know what's all in like the parent portal. But there seems to be some people in the community, and they're not necessarily parents. Who have questions and don't really know. You know, how to get answers to maybe some things that are more common. And I'm not trying to make more work for the district or anything, but it's. You know, there's some way to have on the website some sort of ticker of, you know, things that would be important to the community, not. Not just to parents. You know, I know there is a Facebook page and Twitter, maybe not everybody does those social media, media things. You know, some, some sort of basic website. Stuff that just any community member could easily navigate and see what's going on in the district. I think that'd be helpful. If we can do that. That's all I've got.
Great. Thank you, Marty. Satya?
Well, thank you very much. So, I think some of the common ways of communication is very, very important. We need to find more than one way to communicate. Can have a cup of tea, have a meal, whatever it is between the board members. It's okay. Two to three people can sit together. We are not violating any law. It's really important to understand each other. And communication should be with the intention of listening and understanding. First, we need to overcome the trust, the problem. Then, we go with the idea of listening and understanding. And try to understand the perspective in which. Their lived experience and how they arrived at that perspective. I may not agree. But at least I know, ah, this is the reason this person is believing this way. So, it's really important to understand and never assume, because then the harm is so much more to fix later. Number one. It's going to take more than one approach, folks. It's not like very easy. Hours and hours of phone call or whatever it is, now that the pandemic is a little bit eased. With superintendent. More than one way we can communicate. I have texted superintendent, I called superintendent, I sat in small meetings, emailed extensively. I always, at least in my case, I like to articulate my thought in the email form way before. Sometimes it is too much of communication, but. I really want to get it out there so that people can understand where I'm coming from. If I have to do any background reading, I ask superintendent or something like that. So, that's my way of understanding. I cannot just come to a board meeting and suddenly spring upon and take a decision. I really need to understand. In the same light, I also share in my Facebook and communication. Every day, I have some content or other pertaining to education school. If an issue is coming up, I put that out in the public so that there is no division of knowledge in this community. Because a lot of times, our community don't completely get every picture. And then, they are just going with whatever the partial information or emotional rhetoric. So, I solicit questions from the community. That doesn't mean I have to agree with everything. Same thing, I go to different people and listen. That doesn't mean I have to agree, but at least I can get the sense of what community thinks. And that doesn't mean I'm against anybody, or I'm for everybody. But really getting the community to understand in whatever little way in which I can. I can't afford a massive communication missionary. But some, whatever little I can, like a Facebook and things like that, I communicate. Sometimes I write a little note. Op-ed when the local newspaper used to allow us, now they shut that also down. But I really like to keep our community informed. Give them the various options so that they can be better informed citizens and part help me do my job. Plus, it also helps me report back to them because we, the people, are the ones I report to at the end of the day. So, with the staff, I don't have direct contact. To be honest, none of us. Should directly contact. We should always go through superintendent, at least that's the way it is, because they are not our board staff. And I really want to respect that boundary, that this is board, board policy. And Superintendent Perry, you rightly said, that's your operational executive limitation. So, they are like your operational business. I noticed that sometimes when this boundary gets blurred. Nobody knows what's going on. It's just like a mudfest going on. I mean, everybody's going after everybody. I really think we need to keep that very clear, so that we can say, look, this is the board's role. This is the operational role, and this operational policy will lead to this goal. And I can bring it to the attention of superintendent for the operational issue. For me, it took almost two years to understand that boundary. It's not easy to understand, but once you understand it, you get it. So, I really think all seven of us should operate that way, so that when community starts asking different questions. We can articulate it. And we need to have all options within our first amendment right to communicate. Whether communicate in email form, or write an op-ed, or write an article. Or radio show, media, and so things. We should not stifle ourselves. Because we have to be very responsive to our community. We should not restrict ourselves, because we ultimately are public servant. Public expects us to understand the issue before they vote on certain issue. So, if we don't understand, how do we expect? Two hundred thousand people to understand the issue? How do you expect a small, little community coming from it? In the same line, we need to listen to all perspective, including that mother who may have a neurodiverse child. Doesn't know how to negotiate a testing. She may feel overwhelmed and communicate with us. But then, we need to at least listen to that mother. And then, bring it to the attention of superintendent so that she can make that happen through the operational means. So. Community, public can communicate whatever they want. We should never stop it. It's after all, they are our bosses. Then, we need to have the discernment of saying, what is a board's responsibility? What is an operational responsibility? And make sure. And the communication should be two-way communication. Sometimes the board hears about it, goes into a black hole. And the community is not sure what happened to my email or what happened to the thing. You know, they barely figured out how to send an email to the community board. Now, it goes into a black hole. So, we need to have at least a way to say, thank you for writing. This is what we have done, or we are communicated. Even our legislature sent a postcard. I mean, I'm not saying we should spend money on all that, but at least the least we can do is send an email back. We have to go to different communities who have different ideas. Folks, this is really important. At the end of the day, they're all parents. They all want the same thing, education, safety, wanting to sense a belonging. Public should hold us accountable, so they need to know what's going on, transparency. We need to be honest and say, hey, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm not doing, this is how the money is being spent. This is what the money is not being spent. And community should have the, we should be honest with them. We should not have any secrets with our community, within, of course, the certain limitations. Within the board members, we really have a lot of work to do to build relationship in an authentic way. And we have worse work to do. We have spent twelve months already, and we just, you know, there's a lot of work to do. Unless we build that authentic trust, trusting relationship. Respecting the experience of the previous board directors, like Marty has been there for so many years, and I mean, you know. We all have that cultural continuity. There is a way we can contribute and support each other. We all should be included. We should have a sense of belonging. And sense of being included, invited in committees, etc., so that we are also able to participate. Every human being should feel they belong, they are visible. They should not be made to feel invisible. Those are the, some suggestions I have. I hope.
Thank you, Satya. All right, I want to keep moving. So, Karina, you have your hand up.
I just quickly wanted to bring up. The possible, I guess I got a little. I'm stuck as a word on the functionally and qualitative piece of this. So, my mind started going to like quarterly, bi-monthly, like. Very concrete.
That's where I'm going with that, very concrete.
Yeah, and I guess one that I think is important, and I've heard kind of alluded to, is just, you know, whether it was. Two conversations a year, for example, with just. That informal communication with, let's say, superintendent, right, that you have. Two yearly check-ins to just kind of have a conversation, because at the root of all of this work is the relationships, and I've heard that. But we need to be intentional in actually building the relationship piece. And oftentimes, we come, you know, just like, let's do the work of the board, which is important, but we need to lay a foundation. So. You know, however, we can write this in of checking in with each other and, and with other board members, for example, as well, creating some sort of system. And function to actually work on relationships and for it to not just be a fluff word.
No, there, I captured that. Superintendent will meet at least twice, twice a year with each board member one-on-one. I mean, that's very actionable. All right. That was. I'm waiting to hear from Danielle, Ashley, and Superintendent Perry.
Can you scroll down a little bit?
Go ahead.
I can't see everybody because of this thing. I don't know who's talking.
Oh, you want to see all the tiles, or would you like to?
I want to see the question again.
Oh. Excuse me then. So, how both functionally and qualitatively will the board communicate? And we've heard a lot about qualitatively, how is the board going to communicate? But let's talk about nuts and bolts. How are you going to systematize effective communication for this board?
Well, Vince, I want to add one thing that I think is missing, because we've, there's, there's lots of. Squares on how we should be communicating with each other, or the superintendent possibly, but. There's nothing really on here about how the board will communicate with the community. And frankly, we're here to. Be their voice, to represent them, and to support them in the goals that they have for their education system. And so. I would just like to offer up the fact, just opportunity for the board to collaborate on community forums. Communication forums present in the community that are more, more free, more flexible, might be the better choice of words. That doesn't. I want to avoid recruiting our hoped-for outcomes. You know, we, we've never had community forums since I've been on the board. I've been here three years. And at least not for the board. There has been administrative community forums. I'd like to see the board be more present. As a body. In a flexible environment to listen to the community, to receive feedback that would support the planning that I understand the board would like to do. Over a year's period of time.
Got it. So, the board will hold hearings or forums with the community. And there's really effective ways to do that. So, at OSBA, we support boards in doing that. There are, there are wrong ways to do it, too, so. Good suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Director Bethel. That's something that I had written down. Listening sessions, forums, town hall, whatever we want to call it, or however we want to arrange. It, it's super important to me that we. Make that space available for the community, and we have more time to listen and be present. And then. Yeah, I got really specific with like each other. I think. You have to kind of find what works for both people that are going to have the conversation. And so. You know, I think we've, we've all tried various things like coffee, or lunch, or a drink. Or maybe someone prefers phone calls or texting, emailing, but just agreeing to regularly. In advance of meetings, reach out, try to make that time to talk. So that we're. All in the loop and ready to have. Robust dialogue in the boardroom, you know, as ready as we can be, not knowing. Exactly the outcome that, you know, what people or how people are going to vote, but just that we're. We're in the know about what's coming up for the whole board. The superintendent, I think, communicating. On a regular schedule for board leadership, it's been like several times a week for. You know, sometimes an hour, sometimes three hours, but regular times throughout the week because. Their schedule is so busy running a huge school district. I think it's good to try to save. Some of the questions and discussion for regularly scheduled times. And I find it helpful to be like face-to-face video or in person. And then, quick questions over phone, email, texting, that type of thing.
Okay. Superintendent Perry, I think you have last word. What have we missed?
Yeah, I think agreeing to how you'll, I'm going to use Marty's word cue, your questions cue. How you're going to cue your questions, and then how to systematize those. Because it has been, you know, the practice of trying to send questions to board leadership. That, so that if there was a lot of work on the district part, they could prioritize. While at the same time, I know that a lot of times I can so quickly answer your question, because it's little, but it helps you. So, I, I like being that, that system. Of putting questions to leadership, and at the same time, I know that rapid, a rapid response to an easy. Question can help you navigate a conversation you're having. So. That's just part of me. I think there's other superintendents that might fully only want them to go to board leadership. And, you know, my level of experience also allows me to.
Um, and you know, my level of experience also allows me to quickly answer at times. But it does, uh, take your attention away from, um, the district. And I think, um, uh, opinions about an outcome that are. You know, if there really is concern, those should go to board leadership and not directly to the superintendent. And I think that's just really he- healthy that way, so that systematizes if there are board concerns, that there's a systemic way to address those. And Marty, your, your questions queue was pretty regimented.
Yes, it was. We had a lot of new people and I was trying to get questions answered without overloading you all at once, but.
Yeah.
The queue went away when I, I left leadership, so.
Yeah, but you did a good job of, of really trying to take some very complex questions and saying, okay. Um, we need, um, this is an important question, but it's, it's, we know it's not a question you can answer like this. And you'd also sometimes try to get the question into bite-sized pieces instead of, um, a, a long question that was, um. Hard to know what the actual question was, so.
Hey, great conversation. All right, I have eight minutes. Um, I'm going to look at these questions. I'm going to allow you, we're going to do a speed round. So you are going to have exactly one minute to think of concrete steps that the board can build. Uh, you know, start working on a collaborative relationship with superintendent and staff. And I want you to think in terms of time horizons, three months, six months, and within this next school year. So we're thinking about concrete things that this board can do this year.
Please repeat from the very beginning. Sorry, I've got a headache, so my brain's not totally functioning here.
Concrete steps the board can take to build a collab, build collaborative relationship with superintendent and staff. I think I have a typo in there. And think in terms of three months, six months and a year. So what can you do really fast? And we've already, we've already hit on some things. Six months and then a year. Think of maybe three items, one for each of these. Okay? And we're going to go for one minute. I'm going to go really, really fast. So, one, two, three, four, and starting now, go. Fifteen seconds. Five seconds. Go, Satya.
So within the next three months, let's agree on. Each board member having an opportunity to sit with the superintendent and talk once a month. For at least thirty minutes. And just with the open agenda, whatever superintendent wants to share or the board director wants to share.
Got it. How about six months?
Within six months, identify two goals. And start working on. Where we are with respect to key performance indicators. Two goals are safety. School climate, that's one. And the second thing is learning laws and how do we kind of get our academics back? And within this year. Board will have a retreat and revise the result policy and identify three goals, measurable goals, with what kind of data. To show that we are reaching that goal, measurable data, uh, with data and. And all seven of us will. Have coffee, lunch, meal, whatever it is, takes to. Listen to each other, understand each other, so that we can focus on those three board goals.
Okay. In one, and in one year?
Yes.
For one year?
And we'll, we'll have to revise the result policy. We need a piece of paper, no, and more ambiguity. And that, with that, we'll have measurable key indicators every month or every six months. Maybe the dashboard can be connected or whatever it is.
So that was your one-year goal was revised?
Yes, it'll take one year because we still have a lot of work to do, in my opinion.
Awesome. Ashley, thank you, Satya.
Um, in three months, create, within the next three months, create a twelve-month plan at our summer retreat. That identifies three to five goals for the year. And by six months. Make sure we're sticking to our plan. And re-up our commitment to the strategy that we lay out for the twelve-month plan. And twelve months from now, do it again for the next twelve months.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Okay, who's next? I have three minutes. Any other concrete goals? Superintendent Perry?
Can I jump in on, um, I'd really like how Ashley thought about it. And I think the revision of the results policy could be at the same time you set your planning. So you have high-level goals that are going to continue from year to year, but within that, some of your own goals of things you want to accomplish. And I just, um, was going back to clear as kind, um, and kind is clear. So, um, the clearer you can be, um, together, I think that helps me know and, um, the board know where you're headed.
Perfect. Any other input on concrete steps? It sounds like goal-setting is what this board wants to do. Which, this is, you guys have been saying that for a while.
Vincent, we have to call out safety. And learning, those two have to be our.
Satya, I think we end up doing that when we have our meeting this summer.
Yeah, when, when you, when the board discusses that, yep.
Thank, thank you, Daniel.
Yeah, Vince, I, um, I think it's important that in the next three months, we have a clear understanding of what the superintendent's vision for the next school year is. I think, um, that, you know, there's ever been really a place for her to, um, kind of download the challenges and barriers that she sees. Uh, students, district, community facing. And somewhere we have to provide a space to hear her, so that way we can, one, listen to engage, to create policy to support that, or. Uh, listen to change, because maybe we're not in alignment and we need to work towards that, but we need a platform to be able to do that that's different. Um, than our board retreat, our board policy setting, I think it has to be before.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Any other input on this one? Okay, hearing none, then I'm going to stop there. Um, it's now eight o'clock. I'm going to take just a moment to talk about what's next. So, um, we're going to have to talk about your board operating agreement, um, at our next meeting. Uh, it's really at a point where the board should be able to start working with it on its own. But if the board would like me to continue working with it, um, that's fine and we can have that conversation when we revisit it. Um, I'll also be bringing, uh, and our next meeting, I'll be bringing a draft board superintendent operating agreement for you to consider. Um, so let's just skip to what's next. So right now, we're working on, on operating agreements and doing, making great progress on that. Um, borderals and responsibilities, that is something that we're looking forward to in the summer. Uh, your board self-assessment, yeah, has been released to you. You should have received an email from me. Um, so I'm, uh, this is your gentle reminder to get on those links and go ahead and, uh. You know, fill out those, those surveys. There are two of them. They're a little long. They're about twenty-five minutes each. So, so set aside some time for that. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to reach out to me, uh, via email or just pick up the phone and call. Uh, you have my phone number in the signature line of that email, so you're always welcome to call me. Um. So in your retreat this summer, we're going to talk about board development goals. Um, and so we'll, we'll talk in detail about goals, district goals, superintendent goals, board goals, and what those are. And how they work together and how they're different and how the board can leverage all of those. Um, and then, uh, it sounds like goal-setting, we're going to move this forward, this visioning process, but really move that forward. Um, and focus on, on having the board doing some goal-setting with, uh, district staff. So, uh, really exciting work, um, coming up. So thank you all for your time. I'm going to stop my share. Are there any questions? Um. Of the board, that the board has for me? Hearing none, then I just, I'm deeply appreciative for.
Danielle, you want to read out what you wrote? I couldn't see it.
Sure, I just added in the chat, Vince, on the communication tab, just kind of in processing, if you could add, be proactive versus reactive. On the communication page under a bubble, that would be helpful.
I will do that. I will do that. Proactive, not reactive. Got it. Thank you, Danielle. All right. If there are no other questions, thank you so much for your time. I'm sorry that I went over by three minutes and I yield back to the chair.
Vince, always appreciated for all the work that you do. Thank you for facilitating tonight, this session. We hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, folks. Have a good evening.
Um, Director Carson, do you have a question? Did you hand up? No? Okay, um, does anybody need a quick break? Yeah, do a little quick five-minute break. See you guys at eight oh eight. Moving on to our, our board discussion, um. Agenda item number three on the Oregon revised statute ORS one six six three, uh, one six six dot three seven seven. Possession of firearms in certain public buildings. This is tonight, just a discussion, um, among the board. It really is the safety of students and families, staff, volunteers and any visitors and others on school district campuses. Is of paramount importance to the school board. And it's twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one legislative session, Oregon lawmakers pass Senate Bill five five four. Which expanded the list of locations where concealed handguns are prohibited to allow schools to be included within this group. The bill also requires districts that choose to be within the protected group to formally notify the community through signage on all district buildings. So the Sam Kaiser School Board is here to discuss tonight about prohibiting weapons, including concealed weapons per ORS one six six dot three seven seven. And would like to direct the superintendent to develop and enact administrative policy to achieve this outcome. Now again, this is just a conversation for, for us tonight to discuss, uh, concerns, questions, comments. Um, that we could have going forward. Um, so hopefully that, uh, we can bring, begin this conversation. So I'd ask any board member. That has questions, please raise your hand. We can engage and take notes. Yes, Director Hyun.
I don't have a question and I have a statement.
Perfect.
Let's see. Sorry, bringing it up. Scopus School Board wrestled with this issue and they concluded that there was no rational basis, these are their words, not mine. To change a policy that has been working for thirty years. How many CHL holders have committed mass murder here in Oregon? None. CHL holders go through extensive background checks and interviews. They have to have references as well. And the license must be renewed every four years. Just to purchase a firearm in Oregon, you must go through a state police background check. CHL holders must be at least twenty-one and go through a much more rigorous process than the average gun purchaser. CHL, CHL holders have been able to conceal carry for thirty-three years in Oregon schools. When a mom picks up her kids from school, when she's in the parking lot after a football game, who protects her? Who protects her from Antifa before or after a board meeting? No one. But she can choose if she wants to get a CHL and protect herself and protect her children. In Texas, CHL holders cannot carry in schools. Imagine how different Uvalde may have been if they could. The only good people with, oh, only good people with guns stood outside for an hour. Disallowing CHL holders from carrying on school property will have no positive impact on our schools or our children. And has a very real chance of making things worse. Senate Bill forty-eight becomes effective July one. The law is codified in Oregon revised statute one thirty-five, two, three, three. And by order of the Chief Justice of the Oregon Supreme Court, requires release from custody those suspected of committing certain classifications of crime without security, which is also known as bail. As part of the nationwide movement for police slash bail reform, Oregon has taken the dangerous step that requires law enforcement to arrest, book, and then immediate release suspects that have committed some misdemeanor and felony crimes. Essentially, anyone arrested for committing a property crime, such as theft, burglary, car theft, trespass, or a non-domestic violence assault, arson, and unlawful purchase of a firearm and many other crimes will not be kept in jail any longer than it takes to process them. When we remove the consequences of criminal action, we create an environment where criminals run society unchecked. A mom wrote to the school board and said, I am not a licensed, licensed to conceal, carry a handgun. But as a mom of students in this school district, in the event of an emergency, I feel much better knowing that maybe, maybe, just maybe someone who is licensed and passed many tests to carry and operate a firearm might be around. A CHL carry ban will do nothing about gun violence because these are not the people committing the crimes. And criminals don't care about your rules or your laws.
Thank you, Director Hyun. Second Vice Chair, Noah Sprese.
You're gonna have to bear with me for a second. Does anybody know off the top of their heads how many hours you're supposed to practice driving before you can get your driver's license? Raylan? Probably just did it.
Uh, yeah, I did it over a year ago. It's over a hundred hours if you're not taking an, uh, ODEC, but if you're taking ODEC or with like an, uh, teacher driver, uh, it's fifty hours.
Fifty hours at least, okay, if you're going through a class. When you get your, when you're applying for the concealed carry license, how many hours of firearm training do you need to have? If anybody knows.
I'm going to say four.
So, um, if you go on to the Marion County Sheriff's website, you know, like, you know, just do a quick Google about getting your concealed carry, carry license here. You know, it gives you the, uh, the application, the licensing fees, how to make an appointment to get fingerprinted and process your background check and all that. And there's this very nifty link to a course for, um, firearm safety. To, and then, you know, you're supposed to go through that course, right? Print out your certificate and then you take all those materials to the Marion County Sheriff's Office to get your concealed carry license. I just took that course in roughly eight minutes. So it's going to take me eight minutes of my time and roughly a hundred and seventy dollars, fifty-five for the certificate fee. Plus, like, the hundred and fifteen it is to pay the sheriff to get, like, my fingerprints and background check and all that and process my application. So it takes eight minutes and a hundred and seventy dollars to get a concealed carry license. I am a person that, you know, definitely probably says that owns guns. I mean, I come from the south, well, south adjacent New Mexico. I have been around them my whole life and I definitely understand how dangerous it is. So maybe I could pass that course like a little bit faster because I know how to unload a semi-automatic weapon and things like that and what it means to transport a gun in a car and what it means to be like readily accessible, things like that. But I don't feel comfortable personally trusting someone that did not have to have absolutely any hours of training on a firearm course. Am I saying that people with concealed carry license aren't going to firearm courses? Absolutely not. But the possibility that that is available is not something that I'm comfortable with. We require our police at like roughly a hundred hours of firearms training. And that's to make sure that they can hit the mark. Even more so when you're in the military. I mean, basic training takes weeks. So, no, I do not feel comfortable knowing that someone could come onto the property and think that they are defending themselves when they most, they might miss the mark just because they were able to spend a hundred and seventy dollars and eight minutes of their time.
Thank you. Director Chander Gary?
Well, thank you very much. This is, uh, an important topic. You know, the, I mean, all of you have shared a variety of things. You know, for me, as a psychiatrist, I've dealt with guns, guns, no guns. And, uh, on a daily basis and, uh, every person I see, I have to take a decision. And I also seen the way we have dealt with our school climate and the way we went through the emotions and the, the trauma that our community went through in taking, then the district making a decision around their sorrows. At the end of the day, none of us want, we all want our schools to be free from violence. But I have serious concerns by going this way alone without a good understanding is not going to achieve that for the following reasons. You know, yes, there may be some holes in the training, but I also know a lot of people who are military and veterans and, uh, off-duty police officers and extremely responsible people. And we don't have any data that any one of them have crossed the line. Just like we didn't have any data with our SRS. But the trauma and the emotions were such that a decision had to be made by the district. My only caution is violence is something I deal with in my work and in every aspect I've seen, community violence, et cetera. But we really need to acknowledge that violence is the one we should be preventing. And we really have to start looking at what is going on and go through the upstream, any red flags or any risk situation and start tackling that. To me, that is the way we should. And then we can start asking, what are we going to do? Because right now, the last sections of our community is very scared. You know, on a day-to-day basis, they hear different pieces of information. They see the violence has gone up. They see, you know, we have had, I was just kind of sitting down and looking at our own data, over hundred and ten case. You know, weapon, other weapon-related discipline incidents in our own school district in the last seven months. Over fifty incidents of weapons with blade over seven, two point five, three firearms incident. Another seventy-eight look-alike and fifty-five situations where law enforcement referrals or arrests have been made. Let's look at all those things and start asking, how do we really work in the upstream situation? And tackle those. Those are hard questions, but those are the kind of hard policy that is really going to bring some meaningful result. I truly don't know how many people are walking around in our building with a concealed weapon. Nobody knows. So we are really making a policy change for a baseline data we don't know. One thing we know in thirty-three years, there has never been a major problem. And how are we going to implement it? How are we going to monitor it? Portland International Airport is supposed to have a sign weapons free. I have personally gone and picked up my son and dropped. I'm sure all of you have visited. I really don't know who is carrying what. I don't carry anything. I want to be honest. But the reality is we are living in a world that we have to acknowledge the reality. Let's start by tackling the critical policy changes that will really lead to a violence-free school. This policy change will make us feel good. Temporarily, it'll make all of us feel, or some of us feel safe, some of us feel very scared. But I'm not sure it is really going to make a difference in saving or keeping our schools up. We had a sixteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old kid were, are arrested in that, uh, what a bus stand. On the day when they should have been in school. I don't know which school they are from, but some of the schools they should have been. This is the reality and that child is not going to see our website or a signboard outside and say, this is a drug free. Then we had attendance problems. We had signboards saying everywhere in town saying, please come to school. Attendance is important. I'm not sure if that made a difference in more kids showing up in school. So let's not use emotion. Let's kind of be thoughtful. Let's have a community process where different sections of community members and parents, et cetera, may are feeling safe. You've already had some lockdowns. We have already had some scary situations. And children from North Salem High School felt very scared. So this is not going to achieve that. Let's hold off on this. Let's work on other things. That's how I would approach it. Policymaking, just because we can do it doesn't mean we should do it. There are a lot of policies we can make. We have the power. We shouldn't come across from the position of privilege or saying, I know the answer to every problem. We truly don't know. We have to sit together with everybody and understand what are the critical areas. It's like somebody is bleeding some, you know, you lost your key elsewhere, but you're searching under the lamppost thinking that's where the light is. It's not going to do anything. So I'm really concerned. This is the direction to go, which will further divide our community and further spook some sections and the others group of people are not going to feel safe because we don't, now we don't know what's going on. And how are we going to talk to the mother who has to walk in the parking lot? Some parts of our schools are dark in the night. And some parents are really scared for whatever trauma they have experienced. And just because there is a national trauma and grief, let's not amplify that, but let's do it in a thoughtful manner. And let's ask ourselves, what is this policy change intended to result? And I still don't have a clear answer. I don't have any data in our school district. We have never tracked concealed web, uh, what are the license, handgun licenses. Nobody knows who is coming in and who is going out. But I do know there are many military personnel, many veterans, many off-duty officers. Their children come to us and they are responsible people. And some of them have reached out and saying, I, they don't understand either how this is going to make a difference. I believe only seventeen percent of the school districts in the entire state of Oregon has decided to go this direction. So how is the other district safe? I'm not entirely clear. Why are we tackling this at this time? When we have other things to look at? Why are we not spending more time trying to drill down on our data? We have unprecedented discipline incident. We have unprecedented risk factors for school to prison problems. Our children dropping out, our school climate is kind of taken south. Fifty-five law enforcement referrals compared to in seven arrests when we never had any school-related arrests before. Those are things that keeps me awake in, at night. I'm, it's not that i- in my practice, yeah, I don't have the entire security or a signboard. I have to work on relationship and trust. A sense of belonging is very important. You know, all that is gone. The person who's got, I'm not sure we can address this by this policy change. So I have my concerns, which I really wanted to voice it and I will write a detailed email with my concerns after this discussion so that uh, I don't want to take too much time, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Director Bethel?
Thank you. Satch, there's a lot to unpack there. And while I, I think I understand most of what you said and I agree with probably all of it. I would like to ask whoever's idea this was to answer a couple of questions for me. So I'm not clear on how this topic came to today. If this is a consensus of board leadership, if this was, you know, one individual's request, if this is just, like, I don't, I don't understand how it got here. So I'd like to know that. And then I would like to know how, um, if you pass a policy that restricts concealed, uh, hand license or handguns from being on property, how you're going to enforce that?
So this, this is a, a topic, you know, from the Senate bill that I've referenced, Senate Bill five five four, that was passed, right? And in creating more safety, uh, more guns creates more violence and all the facts are out there. There's data to support that. This isn't attacking concealed ha- uh, handlers. Owners. This is just creating a gun-free zone. This is brought on in a discussion through board leadership. Talked, uh, talked at length to bring it to as a discussion to the rest of the board. And since we are not having anything planned yet, that our goal is to direct the superintendent to provide a policy that would come later with the superintendent and her team. Again, this is also, staff are already prohibited from carrying concealed weapons into classrooms. So that, that's already there. Visitors are already prohibited from carrying concealed weapons onto camp, uh, school, schools. That's already there. We want to take the effort in improving safety, um, by bringing this discussion forward. So I hope those answers are questions.
Thank you. They don't actually. I feel like you skated around a couple of them, to be honest, but that's fine. We can hash it out later if we need to. I still, I don't understand. So what safety challenges exist right now or in the last thirty years? Because that's the number that we've heard twice tonight. Can you identify for me to understand your fear or concern that have actively occurred in the Salem Kaiser Public School system? That we're actively trying to mitigate because they've occurred?
Appreciate your questions. I'll write them down and provide feedback later.
Would you please be sure to provide it to the full board as a public record? Because these are questions that are being asked by members of our community who would like to understand this direction. And I assume we likely won't have another work session on it. And with efficient meetings being chosen to be run, I don't know that we'll have this dialogue in the future. And, and I suppose for the record, if it's necessary, um, it might seem clear, but I won't support any policy to ban concealed carries from district property. I would support, um, a dialogue, a work group, um, to come together of a non-quorum board and members of the community to work towards a violent-free school district. I'm fully pro that. I would really love to have discussion around, um, what violence is occurring in our schools and what's plaguing our communities? And how we as a board, um, can move forward with efforts of education and collaboration to resolve some of those uh, challenges that we're facing. Uh, but I won't be supporting any policy moving forward based on that law. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair Carson Kine.
Um, I'll just say that I'm, I appreciate the conversation. I think, um, I'm pretty sure I've talked to all of you individually, um, about this topic coming forward. It's a tough one, um, because I know we're pretty divided on our views, um, on this topic as a board. Um, it's a tough one, um, because I know we're pretty divided on our views, um, on this topic as a board. For me, it's really simple. Um, I'm supportive of Salem Kaiser Public Schools, our sporting events, our board meetings being weapons-free. Um, and I know, and all the research and evidence and data supports that where there are guns present, there is a much higher risk of gun injury or death. Um, and suicide, by the way. Um, we also know, and the data supports, that ninety percent of mass shootings occurred where civilian guns were allowed, or where there was armed security or law enforcement present. And so for me, if this policy of having a weapons-free environment for our public schools where our children are every day can prevent one death or one injury, it's worth it to me to ask that we become fully weapons-free and that people, in addition, leave their concealed carry at their home or wherever it can be safely stored, that's not on our campuses and at our events. We know also that firearm deaths are increasing in Oregon. Um, and I just want our kids and our educators to know that they're safe and that they can learn in a weapons-free environment. I really feel like it's a very simple and straightforward policy. It's not making a larger statement on Second Amendment rights. It's basically just saying, we don't want our public schools, where our kids are every day, to have weapons of any kind. And that's how I feel. Um, and yeah, I think we should have this discussion in public, like we're doing tonight, so we can all share our views.
Okay, thank you, Director Shandigiri.
Thank you for a good discussion, I mean, we are, it looks like we are having different positions. But a couple of really hard questions are, you know, right now, we don't have the thirteen SROs who knew our layout, who knew our children, and children could trust them and share, or whatever it is. We never had any such incidents from them. So right now, there's going to be a lag time before, say, Salem Police comes or Marion Sheriff comes. And we had some of the schools where they had to be called in. And I'm not saying that anything terrible happened. But these are the near-miss events that we had in our own community. We had, we really have to be grounded to the reality while we are making these policy changes. I mean, in the aspirational world, yeah, we all want zero suicide, I'm not in favor of any of this suicide. We don't want any violence, I'm also for zero violence. But it's like saying, I don't want a nuclear plant leaking in my town, but I need to have systems to pick it up early. This is really taking me back to the question, the last almost one year, we have been asking, the data has been going up, we have been asking, why? When are we going to sit down and talk about the data? To me, there are a lot of risk factors, lot of red flags, bullying, violence, this, that, which are like the precursors. I'm not saying everybody is going to end up with being a match, please don't. But we do have lot of those red flags and things are there. We haven't made any critical policy changes to intercept that at an earlier level. We haven't trained all the five thousand staff to intercept in a restorative manner, etc. We still have a lot of work to do. There's still going to be a lag time before we decide to call the police or whoever to come in town and, and from, to come and thing. The relational part that our children and the community and the teachers and everybody had with those thirteen officers has been severed. And there is a lack of sense of belonging, it's like in twenties or twenty-thirty percent, our panorama is dating. So there is a lot of static and potential risk factors are there. So this certainly comes across as, you know, we are just making a value statement because we believe in it. But it doesn't really give me confidence or give our community members confidence, saying what is going on underneath? And how are we managing safety on a day-to-day basis? Teachers are, just because they're not talking doesn't mean they don't feel safe. We do have serious incident, I hear about it, I read about it, I, somebody, some, they keep bringing it up. And community members are feeling a sense of disconnect and feeling unsafe. So I, I'm not sure this is contributing to that. Yeah, we all have personal value statement about how we think about it. But the reality is about the average parent or family members or the teacher or the staff member feeling safe so that they can do their job. And I'm not sure we have provided that. And, and we haven't brought down the numbers of the rising numbers of discipline problem, bullying problem, violence, and children pulling out knives at each other, over hundred and ten weapon-like in incident, fifty, over fifty knife with the blade. These are all potential missed opportunity we need to be tackling, we have a lot of work before.
Director Shandigiri, the discussion that we're having right now is about whether or not to not, whether to extend our current policy to include concealed weapons. That's the topic we're discussing.
With due respect, this cannot be seen in isolation when everybody is feeling sad, they are all related. It is almost like saying, uh, you know, should I take the brakes off my car, but I don't want to worry about who is driving, how we are driving? They are so related. Safety is not like, just because you remove a starter policy, suddenly the safety will, people feel safe. I'm not entirely clear by having a, a website or a.
I don't think that's what anybody else is saying either.
That's what I'm hearing, based on that, that's what the parents are hearing. How are the children going to be safe? How is the district going to be safe when we are removed their SROs? We didn't have any data. Now, using the similar national emotions, we are trying to do this. When we had zero data to support, this has been a problem with concealed people. So we are really tackling a non-issue and trying to make it into an issue. And then telling everybody that you're all going to be safe, I'm not hearing that. Based on the numbers that keep going up, I don't feel our children are feeling safe, our community is feeling safe, our teachers are feeling safe. We need to tackle this first and then we can visit this. We are doing, we are putting the cart before the horse and trying to expect some outcome from this. Let's tackle the real issues, let's deal with that, let's have a rich conversation and a work session and start changing the needed policy rather than doing something which will make us feel good, but it's not going to result in anything, sorry, I have to speak up.
Thank you, this isn't just to feel good, this is actually to protect and, and, um, provide a weapon-free zones. Now, did you, I want to ask you a question, did you read the Statesman, uh, Journal article, I believe it was the same reporter article, what, uh, Chief Womack stated about SROs being, being in schools? Did you read the data report, large report on SRO impacts on students of color?
I have not read Chief Womack's report. But in the last two and a half year, two, two years or so, I have read several reports, including the reports from uh, Marion County, a report from our student task force. I spent hundreds of hours, of more than hundreds of hours, and Superintendent Perry and I have spent hundreds of hours, we have, our, and that. So I, this particular Salem reporters newspaper, I have not read, but I'll be very happy to read that in addition to whatever else I've read.
Thank you, please, please do, I'm gonna call in, uh, Vice Chair Knowles Pressing.
Um, well, now I feel like I need to think about my statements, since we're trying to keep to the task at hand. Um, but to me, passing a policy that prevents concealed carry within district property is also removing a piece of normalizing violence to our students. You know, as other folks have mentioned, I think Chair Avila mentioned it. The statistics of whenever a handgun is available increases the risk of both someone taking that handgun and using against others, or, and exponentially increases the risk of you, them using it again on themselves. That is definitely a concern. I do agree that there is an issue that we need to make sure that we're tackling, and that is, what is going on with our students? And this is one of those pieces, is making sure that they don't think that the first response to someone sliding them is using a weapon that could end someone's life. Like, I just think we have normalized and belittled human life. Especially in instances when, um, like, I remember during the Black Lives Matter movement when a, like, gas station attendant shot a kid over a, over ceiling of forty ounce Bud Light. And like, I don't think someone's life is worth the equivalency of like a three-dollar beer. But anyway, that's separate from here and there. Um, to what I understood from Director Shandigiri's point about safety and security and not having SROs present in schools, we also have data that SROs haven't stopped mass shootings. I do appreciate the relationship the district has with police, because as we've seen, when we do have scares and concerns, they have been able to come out rather quickly. And that is not a piece that I'm concerned about. I am concerned about how our students are feeling specifically within the buildings. And that's what, to me, I don't know when the conversation was brought up to put this on the board, the agenda, like what the full conversation was. I mean, to me, that's what this is. Similarly to other policies that we've passed.
Thank you, Director Bethel.
So I, uh, Maria, I appreciate the idea of wanting to have discussions and make policy and positions to where we're encouraging kids to use words over violence. I don't know how that poli, this policy gets us there, like, I don't see your path for that. What I do see, and what I feel frankly, is that you, the majority of you, because it's pretty clear that the majority of you support this, um, want to move forward and say that concealed handgun owners who come to school district functions um, provide a threat. Because for some reason you think that that gun is going to become available to whoever besides the handler, the licensed handler. And I find this to be just, uh, an unfortunate discussion, because we have no data in this district to support that. And we, we consistently, as a school board, just pass resolutions and make policies without actual teeth, without actual outcomes. This policy, in my opinion, is going to do nothing, except for put something on paper and maybe start a volatile conversation between people who have a very strict position on their Second Amendment rights, whether it, whether you, Ashley, or anybody else feel that it doesn't threaten that, we can't control how people feel about this. They're going to have their feelings, and we're going to enter into a space that is going to distract us from doing our jobs. Our job, in my opinion, at this point, as a school board, is to find real actionable ways to produce safe environments for our kids. And that's not tagging concealed handgun owners as contributors to violence. Uh, because somewhere outside of the area that we have jurisdiction over, there was a situation. I, again, fully support a conversation and action of this board and the district frankly, to enter into collaborative discussions with local community partners around the challenges that we're facing in, with violence in our communities, and work towards steps to reduce that. So that way, kids can come to school and feel safe across the board. Uh, you know, I, I, I'm open to hearing from students who feel like coming to a sporting activity is scary for them, because someone's grandpa or someone's grandma might have a gun on them in their purse that they didn't know about until we talked about it in this forum. You know, I have three kids that go to this district, and I promise you, not a single one of them goes to an activity in their daily lives and wonders how many people in the audience is sitting there watching a volleyball match or a football game, and how many guns might be there? What I can tell you is occurring in the minds of my, me and my husband, is who's coming to the schools to create chaos and harm? And who's going to respond fast enough to protect an audience of kids or parents in the stands? You know, one of our high schools, uh, and it wasn't north, but had a, um, active shooter drill, they sent all the kids to one space. And while I, I don't understand that, because I feel like that just puts all of our students as to be targets. We're not, we're not saying the active shooters are concealed handgun owners. Active shooters, people who create chaos are criminals, and they're not legally licensed to carry guns. Like, I'd love to see the data on that. I'll, I'll continue to search Google, if you have it, please send it to me, because I want to be informed on this. But I just cannot understand why we're picking this discussion right now when we have serious issues in our buildings, serious issues. And I do understand, Maria, I just want you to know that it resonates with me when you talk about the availability and access to weapons and the outcome, whether it's mass shootings or direct suicide because of the access to that. I'd love to have that conversation, but I do not believe that concealed handgun owners that come to district property are providing that access. So if you have that information, I am open to seeing it, I'm open to understanding it and having that discussion. But I also just want to say, and maybe I misheard you, Chair, but it sounded like you already gave directions to the, to the superintendent at the beginning of this discussion when you read your statement. Um, so it doesn't sound to me, Ashley, like, um, at least I'm not understanding at this point if there's further discussion to occur? Or if you, it's your intention based on the way he read that statement to just have the superintendent go draft a policy um, that can be debated? Because if that's the direction you're already going, it doesn't feel like a collaborative, open discussion to me. It feels like you're doing something, and whether we like it or not, it's going to move ahead, and maybe we can, you know, choke down some of the wording. But if that's not the intention, please elaborate.
Yeah, I can respond to that. Um, so what Azvaldo, uh, Chair Avila raised at the beginning was, you know, what the intent would be if at a next conversation, it is voted on, or it's the will of the board, etc. It's, you know, there's no, um, drafted proclamation that we are passing today. Um, so there's plenty of time and space and runway. Um, you know, it's simply, uh, you know, one sentence directive that the board would, the school, if we vote on it, and if there's a favorable outcome to that vote that would pass eventually, it would state something along the lines of, we would ask that the superintendent implement a policy to expand our current policy to include all weapons on campus.
So it's your intention right now that we continue this discussion?
Yeah.
And, and what does that look like to you? I, I really, really want to actively participate in this, is what's what I'm asking.
Well, I think it looks like the conver, for me, I'll just give you my personal, I think it's having this conversation. It's continuing to talk, it's continuing to hear from the public, and it would come back at a future agenda. Um, you know, for a vote, or if we need to have more discussion for another discussion like this. Um, I don't, we don't have like a set. We heard loud and clear that you all want to have board discussions on topics. And so that's what we're attempting to do tonight on both of these topics, is come and talk about the topics so that we then create a pathway forward that has multiple opportunities for input from the public, from all of you, that we all work together to go somewhere on it. Um, and
Okay.
You know, I will say that I have heard instances of people concealed carrying in our district. In fact, people that sit on this very meeting tonight, in schools where a child saw the weapon in, in the bag and reported it to the school. So there's an instance where there's high risk. And I just don't, I don't see why that's necessary to have that opportunity present. And I just don't, I don't see why that's necessary to have that opportunity present. That's how I feel. And there are other instances that I know of as well. And so you know, more guns means more risk. Thank God, we haven't had an instance where, that I know of, where a concealed weapon was taken and used to kill someone. Thank God. I want to prevent that. And if not having weapons in people's bags on our premises can prevent that? That's what I'm I'm asking for and I feel really passionately about it. Again, this is not a statement on people's second amendment rights for me. I too grew up in a household with guns. My grandfather taught hunter safety. My dad's a hunter, right? Like I get that that's part of our culture. I'm not. And I don't feel safe having guns in our schools, concealed or otherwise.
Thank you. Um, Director Hain, I give you the last um comment here on our we actually have, we haven't heard from Director Guzman, so she'll be the last commenter. Uh, sorry, Director Chindigiri.
Something I heard really concerned me was that uh CHL people belittle life. And that's not true. In fact, they uh are CHL because they want to protect life. Whether it's their own life or that of their family. Uh, CHL people may follow the rules, but criminals will not. We should be concerned about criminals hurting kids, not law-abiding citizens.
Not sure if I heard the same thing, but um we'll continue that conversation. Director Guzman Ortiz.
Thank you. Um, just a brief, I I I know that this conversation is the difficult one. Folks have thoughts and feelings about how we got here today. Um I I did hear comments about this conversation or if an action is taken, what their response might be in the community and um and not wanting to stir anything up. I just want to recognize that there will be feelings and emotions um from many people. Uh, but that to me isn't an indicator necessarily or a reason to take action or to do nothing. Um, that will always be the case. And I think it's obvious for us that we are living in a perpetual fear. Just yesterday, I read an article about folks in New York at a pride parade running because they heard fireworks and just the that perpetual fear of fearing that it is an active shooter and like others have stated, um what I hear or what I see, uh, what it, what comes to mind as I think about this topic is the need and the response, I guess the responsibility that we have as leaders within this district to mitigate any, any harm and a weapon or a concealed hairy, carry um carrier might not be the threat, right? Like, they may be responsible users and responsible citizens, absolutely. However, a weapon is an increased liability. So that that is what comes to mind, of course. And I've heard from folks also thinking about what it takes to respond to perhaps somebody an active shooter in a school or somebody causing harm. And I just want to say that we've heard about the relationship with our local police departments and at the, during the incident of May twenty seventh, which had North Salem High School and Parish Middle School in lockdowns, I believe, level three, level four. Salem Police Department showed up within forty seconds um after a report was made. So I just want to state that and just know that there is a relationship, there is trust, um, and trusting that our security, our Salem Police Department and the systems or Salem um would show up to respond to any, any possible violence. Um, so I just there are different avenues, there are different options. And I see that this at least as a way of mitigating um any possible li- liability within our, our schools.
Thank you, Director Guzman Ortiz. Um, due to only having five minutes until we have to adjourn this meeting. I do want to move us into a quick, very quick, um, receive any type of public comment consideration that's on the agenda for item agenda item three B. Um, so if there's some quick comments regarding public comment considerations, we'd like to hear them now. And Director Guzman Ortiz, do you have any comment on that? I see your hand up. Okay, Director Hain.
Yes, uh, my only concern, I mean, I understand we want to keep, keep and get to the point of what we want to vote on, et cetera. My only concern is uh some people don't feel like they're being heard and sometimes this is the only opportunity for them to make sure that the district and or the board has really heard their concerns. And usually things that come in the boardroom are more likely to get acted on than just email items. And so I hate to take that away from the public. If I'm understanding what you're talking about doing.
Yeah, it's, it got placed onto the agenda, so we're just, I'm trying to be open-minded and listen more on on top of all the other changes we've already enacted into the public comment process of trying to create this a more um very transparent, as as, as I've already stated, we don't get to see who's, who signs up for public comment. We've done implemented lottery system um on agenda items. So just trying to hear. Yes, Director Chindigiri.
Yeah, so I am concerned about the non-agenda item to be excluded. Because last year we heard that the children from BIPOC communities were silenced, tone-policed. And we were told by Superintendent Perry, another board director, to listen to the community and they were right. People were suffering. And oftentimes when people are hurting, there's a disconnect between what is an agenda and what is not an agenda. So we have to really listen to that. The next important problem I'm seeing is between Superintendent Perry as a district superintendent and the board leadership, you control the agenda. So imagine if you control the agenda and you say only comments pertaining to agenda should come up. Then what about the people's hurting? What about the mother who may have a neurodiverse child whose child is getting hurt and she is not able to appeal? And right now even a bill was killed where you couldn't even go to OD. If she wants to bring it up, how can we say to her that, sorry, this is not an agenda item, we don't want to hear about it? How do you hear about a small little community that may be wanting to talk about it? I really think we should continue non-agenda and agenda. Because ultimately to seek redress from our government should be a fundamental part of our first amendment. So by putting these things, we are really creating more systemic barriers which will really kind of close in and we will start shutting down. People have questions about safety, education. What's going on with the uh our uh learning and so many other people have in mind, which is never coming up in agenda and, you know, it takes six, seven months to get an agenda on topic. Do a language, we faced it. It took seven months from start to finish. So if you control the agenda and you say, oh, you want comment only for agenda, then it's almost like you're trying to control what comes to us. And I'm really concerned, this is not a way to silence people or silence a discussion. And so this is a slippery slope I don't want us to go into. We have taken pride even in the worst time to listen to the community. And we cannot police, they are the ones who, we report to them, we can't start policing and telling people that sorry, you, you are not allowed, you are not included. And vast sections of our community is feeling that they have no voice. Even some of our directors don't feel com- uh included and we can't do this, please.
Thank you, Director Chindigiri, but I did only pre- prevent non-agenda item, a com- public comment in the last meeting, which was uh, also, we provided a large public comment and public comment on the budget. So that's why we limited it to that time. Other than that, has not been limited. And other individuals, everybody, anybody can email the board members. As an opportunity for everybody to provide input, share their concerns so that we can address it. Cr- is that correct? That they can email?
No, based on the
But but is that, is that correct? You asked, how can they pr- provide information? How can they commit, you know, talk about it? They can email us, is that correct?
Well
Is that, is it? I'm asking you
What you're talking about. When you start restricting public comment, you're silencing the voice of
Thank you, Director Chindigiri. Thank you. Uh, Director, you know, it's pressing.
I, I am concerned about, um like the time period that people have to really process our board materials to be able to provide public input. Um, or, you know, like the time period after a a board meeting. I mean, maybe that's not necessary, but it just feels like our current process, while I understand that maybe like the intention of placing this on the, on the agenda was to talk about agenda items versus non-agenda items, I just feel like the current system that we have doesn't provide people enough time to really like digest any of the information, same to board members, for them to be able to understand maybe what the board's intent is or what they're hoping to hear from the community. Especially when we have community members that um don't have access to email, wifi, computers, um, any or the ability to and and like really need to be able to be present in person. Um yeah, I I don't know where we were going really with this, but I I do have a lot of, a lot of concerns.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Director Bethel.
I'm not laughing at you, Maria. I'm laughing maybe with you. Because there's a lot to unpack here. Um, with just that one little uh sentence of increase. Actually, I just want to say thanks to the conversation earlier today about this. I thought we really tackled some really good um talking points and I took no notes. So I will do my best to recap what I shared with her. Um I have concerns around the stage that's been provided through the Zoom platform to no fault of any of our own because of COVID and needing to move to online meetings. I was on this board previous to COVID and while we have always had a robust public comment section of our meetings when we are in person, um it was very different. And a lot of the same participants uh attended those media meetings pre-COVID and provided their their input or feedback or question. My concern today is we as a board have not really had an open discussion on really what's appropriate um and how, how the organization, the body should be addressed. Um, I think it's necessary to have public input in both agenda and non-agenda items in our meeting. And I, I really do think that if we can get to a method of community forums and we're more present to have those active dialogue, uh, kind of fluid discussions in the community. We might be able to reduce some of the um, challenges that we're facing with the lo- the length of, of comment that's coming at us, whether it's agenda or non-agenda items. I I don't want to be in three or four hour long meetings. I don't, I don't, none of us do. And and frankly, the people watching don't want to be sitting on their couches in a boardroom in a, in a hard plastic chair for that long. But people feel disconnected, right? We're, we are, this is a result of people feeling disconnected, uninvolved. Um, unsafe, unsure, all the things, all the, all the not good things. And so also, I have really no major advice to offer you right now. I just want to say that I fully support um short uh bits of input. I, you know, I su- I support two minute, two minutes of input, whether it's agenda or non-agenda. I do agree that the board can be emailed. However, I do not agree that our email addresses are not readily available on the website. I've never liked, they are mitigated, tr- uh filtered, whatever, through the board secretary. That's not her role. It doesn't provide us direct access, um, the, the community direct access to us. They have to chase it down or find some activist group that has our emails in bulk. Um, if we really want to say that we're available, they should be able to go to the website, click on our picture and get access to our email. Or get to a link that says email the full board, so we're all just looped into one email chain, whatever. And so I, I don't know that the system that we have in place is the most um successful for me. I know that Alice gets emails about topics that parents are engaging in the district and then she's solving those. But we don't ha- kind of have a relationship in that. There's just a lot of things I think that we need to overcome in our relationship with the community. I think some of this will be mitigated, but I do support in some fashion, agenda and non-agenda topic items, but we just have to limit it.
Thank you. No, it's okay. Thank you. It is, it is been an attempt to create a public meeting, not a public forum. And I think limiting those public non-agenda items becomes a public forum and we've gotten away from a public meeting. And so how do, how do we continue to engage with community? You got, you provide some good ideas in those community town halls or community meetings, um, and not have that pre- public forum presence inside the, the board meeting. So, but it is a challenge. Um, Superintendent Perry.
I just wanted to make one comment. You made me think of something, Director Bethel. Um, the new law that happened as a result of COVID, even if we go to in-person, we still have to allow um, access via Zoom or phone calls um for comment. And um, a lot of boards are saying exactly the same thing you said about it's um, so much, it's just such a different human experience when people are in the boardroom and you can have the topic. So there's some unintended consequences with that new law too, I think. I just wanted to point that out.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you forward that law to me so I can read it? I want to understand a little differently. Um, kind of what it's saying. And then Azvaldo, just as a suggestion, when we talk about community meetings versus community forums, lots of bodies of law have been producing these public meetings through COVID without the same level of chaos that we've had and been able to maintain that public meeting perspective. I appreciate kind of the um, the difference there. And maybe one of the c- the different components is that, uh, you know, work sessions are for discussion and then direction. We don't, we have never allowed in work sessions, um, with the exception of one time since I've been a board member community to kind of participate in a way, not with a um they come and ask questions or um they're available to kind of be there and then have, have discussion after. Because see, I don't remember what the meeting was, but there was one meeting that we had in, in either early twenty twenty or late twenty nineteen where we had members of the community and Olivia was there, um, and we, they kind of participated in our work session discussion. Um, and we were moving towards policy, but it was with their input in that work session. So just as a suggestion, maybe there's certain topics that we have work sessions on that we need to invite. Um, and this was invited audience, right? It wasn't just a free for all. It was invited groups that had positions to present. And we had open discussion, learning discussion in that work session to work towards um policy outcomes that I think supported kind of the full circle of um interested individuals.
Yeah, it might have been boundary change process.
Oh, gosh, no.
We were around the table and that was rough too.
Yeah, I know. I just remember who was there and I, I'm sure it had maybe to do with equity or something. Um, I have to go back. It was when, um, it was before Ethan. Anyway, sorry. Healthy, but it was invited and it was um controlled by the chair. I don't remember. I think it was, anyway, sorry.
We did a couple of those really good around the table things.
Okay, great. Um, if we get that information rec- recalled, let's, let's share that out. Um, I'll give the space to Vice Chair Carson Cunningham to kind of wrap us up.
Okay, um, well, with that in mind, I know we're running out of time. I think if um, anybody has more thoughts about things like uh, everyone shared a lot of great information. Do we want to always give the opportunity for agenda and non-agenda at every meeting that we have public comment? Um, your thoughts on, like, Director Bethel brought up two minutes, we've been doing three. Let me, let us know what your preference is. Um, and um, we've varied from like thirty minutes of public comment to forty-five minutes. I think we've done an hour. And, you know, I'm just curious what of, what people think we should settle on. Should it be consistent? Or should we be flexible and based on the other agenda topics, we set the time for comment each time? Just looking for like what people think, you know, what should be our normal um way of proceeding so that we can kind of lock it down and stick to it. kind of lock it down and stick to it and, and the public knows what to expect. And we all know what to expect. And we can continue to implement the policies that, um, Director Guzman Ortiz, you know, has pressy and Director Bethel all worked on earlier this year, just to make it, you know, better and better. And if you want to email us, that's good or say no. Thanks. Thanks for the discussions tonight, everyone.
Thank you, Director Bethel.
Just quickly, it made me think, uh, when she talks kind of about the agenda. If there's an opportunity for board leadership to pack more into a consent calendar, then us having to have these you know, lengthy drawn out actionable items. You know, I think it's been consistently heard that we need to be doing the work outside of the boardroom. And if we're getting the information in advance, like I agree with Director Hain that getting the information is a non uh, leadership person on Friday when the public gets it or an hour before is really insufficient for me. My life is busy. I, and there, it's always over the weekend. I would really support also what Maria said in getting the information out sooner. And that can be done. We can shift the way we do things. It's a little difficult in the process upfront, but long term, I think there's a payoff for the board and for the public. Um, I recently went through this with my other job and it was a little difficult for staff and I openly admit that. But I think if it's, the outcome is to try to help everybody on the receiving end of it, I, I don't know why we wouldn't want to consider it. So more time. And then again, just try, looking at what could be in consent, I think would be helpful to the length of the meeting. And then you, as you go into those planning sessions and determining what kind of comments you're going to take. Then actually, I think you can determine whether it's thirty or forty-five minutes or an hour, depending on what kind of input you think you're going to be getting and if it's constructive. Frankly, I'm looking for constructive input on the direction and policies we're setting. Um, tha- that's what I want to hear in the boardroom. And so if we can move towards that and, and recruiting that from the public, that would be great. Um, it's okay for people to disagree and not like things, but there's ways to also work outside the boardroom towards, to where we have an educated understanding and relationship building efforts outside the boardroom to really, um, be more collaborative and then maybe change policy mindsets. I don't know.
Thank you, Maria. Or Vice Chair, Second Vice Chair, Noah's Pressy.
I am, I get so excited when someone can say my whole last name. So I know that at this point, we're just, uh, nice milk in extra minutes of time with Interactio. Thank you for hanging out with us. Um, I was hoping that Superintendent Perry could remind us about upcoming in-person board meetings, because I am really excited about that. Disappointed that our last spot didn't work out, but really glad that we came, that we figured something out.
So you're saying you didn't pay attention, uh, while Vin- uh, Vince was locked out. I'm just kidding.
No, I'm saying that there's audience members that probably wanted to join in for the juicy discussion parts and didn't get that part.
I know, just picking on you. Uh, Superintendent Perry.
All right. So Miller Elementary School is our location for the summer. Um, and the boardroom, we've got it set up. We've done, uh, technical walkthroughs. We've done safety walkthroughs. Um, Interactio, I think, needs to do another um, two-hour training because there will be some downloading of apps and we'll need to be sure people have the right headphones and stuff if they're wanting to listen, um, when things are translated. Um, I think sometime, um, maybe even, it's, it's already July, so maybe next week. We may want people to come in and do a quick walkthrough of, um, the building, make sure you know where to park, all of that. Um, and so we're all good to go. We have had some help from our, um, a couple of our high school um, AV licensed educators who are helping us set up the AV equipments. I want to do a huge shout out to our two licensed teachers from McCann, uh, McNary who have helped us, uh, pull this off. And I think CCTV has figured out all, all the technical difficulties as well. So, um, we're good to go for July twelfth. Um, I do think it's really important that we're all in the room, um, to the greatest extent possible. Um, because it, um, it loses something if we're not all together, um, during that time. Um, so Alice will get some more information out to you. Um, and again, we'll set up some time to do some kind of safety walkthroughs and things.
Thank you for that information. Uh, Second Vice Chair, Noah's Pressy, your hand's still up?
I was just gonna ask, um, so with the app, is that something that um, community members that are going to be per, like, attending are going to need to download? And I know for the sake of time, maybe this is something that we can put out later.
Yeah, um, I'm going to see if, um, Assistant Superintendent Cobb is still, um, active.
Yes, I'm here. And actually, this Friday, we are, uh, meeting Interactio, uh, through Zoom. And CCTV, because our team thinks that we won't need the app at the end. We want to remove that as a barrier in case there are a couple of families that maybe don't have a phone. Um, and so we want to use our headsets. If you remember, we have really nice headsets and we're going to have a headset for English, a headset for Spanish. And then we all will use them so that when there is public comment in, comment in Spanish, you all can put your headset on and then continue listening to English. And then the public will do the opposite if we, or whatever language they need. So that is the trial that we are going to do this Friday. We're going to have all of our technical team, CCTV, our translations team. Interactio at eleven thirty at Miller. Um, because we wanted to see if we could remove, uh, the need to use the app. Um, just in case that becomes a barrier for some of our families. So, yeah. Now, I, I can update you through email maybe by next week.
Um, and, um, yeah, huge shout out, Olga, for all your work on this. And it would be the same sort of technical work with Interactio, even if we were in the boardroom. So this is good, um, trial run, um, during the summer, patience as we work through, uh, many of the technical issues. The other thing, um, as we were looking at dates of availability. Um, and I've all run this by board leadership, but we're looking at July nineteenth as a date that a lot of people uh, board member wise are available for that evening when Alice pulled. So, um, we'll finalize that, um, with board leadership and then get you out calendar invites for that as well.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank, uh, H.R.S. interpreters, Interactio interpreters, um, everybody that's been here hanging on. Sorry for running this a little bit late. Uh, do want to say thank you for the conversation. We'll continue forward. Please submit further conversations with us or make a phone call. Uh, appreciate it. Rayland, uh, welcome. Um, looking forward to really engaging with you when we do a swearing in, official swearing in in, in July. I hope everyone has a happy Fourth of July weekend. Stay safe, be safe and enjoy your family. Enjoy your time wherever you may be. So thank you. It is nine eighteen. I call this meeting adjourned. Have a good night.